We'll call it an order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for February the 20th, 2024. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from February the 6th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Cemetery Advisory Board, Mayor Protown, Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins immediately and ends February 4, 2028. Incumbent Jerry Smith has served two full terms. I would like to nominate Robert Crumpton for that vacancy.
Second. Have a motion of second for Robert Crumpton. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will confirm that later on in the agenda. Questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Any questions? Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn?
Second.
All right. We are adjourned, and for our audience, we will get started right at 6 o'clock. We'll call it an order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for February the 20th, 2024. Certainly welcome to everybody that's joined us live here tonight. We think all of you might be listening on WANI as well as watching through our streaming services. Welcome to our meeting. Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams, Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the Committee of the Whole, the City Council appointed Robert Crumpton to the Cemetery Advisory Board, and we certainly again want to thank Mr. Jerry Smith, who served two full terms. Under Mayor's announcement tonight, I want to welcome members of the Auburn High School FFA that have joined us this evening. We're glad to have you guys and look forward to hearing from you a little bit later on in our agenda. I want to say thank you to everybody that participated in helping and putting on and working the War Eagle Run that occurred this past Sunday. There was almost 4,000 people who participated in that run. I believe a lot of those people came from out of town and spent a little money with us as they got their exercise on, and we appreciate the organization. Certainly Public Safety did a lot of work to maintain our roads on a Sunday morning where people are busy going to church and doing other things, but congratulations. This past, yesterday in fact, I attended the Presbyterian Community Ministries Annual Meeting. Certainly want to thank that organization again for all the hard work that they do to provide support for those in need in our community with home repairs and helping to pay different kinds of bills around their houses. This ministry's been in our community for a long, long time. I believe it started in 1969, and so some very dedicated citizens are part of this, and they were having their annual meeting, and I appreciate the invite to be a part of that. Last Saturday night, the Darden Foundation extended scholarships to five young people who are actually all going to universities, our colleges at Auburn, summer at VCOM. They're pharmacy students, nursing students, and what a great celebration of the history and the legacy of Dr. Darden, who was our first ever African-American physician in Lee County, and certainly his legacy is continuing on with these young people who are getting opportunities to go to either pharmacy school, nursing school, or medical school through the support of the Darden Foundation. This coming Sunday night, I'll be attending the banquet of the SGA's officers as they say thank you to their present officers and they install their new officers, and I certainly look forward to that and continue to be very bullish on the relationship between the student body and their leadership in this city and making things better for all of us who live here in Auburn. I want to say congratulations to the Auburn High Girls Basketball Team, who won a close game today in the lead eight. Will be playing in the Final Four next week in Birmingham. We're very proud of those young ladies. Our boys almost won. They came up two points short, but congratulations to both of those teams, but we look forward to keeping up with the girls' team as they continue moving on. And I want to remind everyone, and I said this last time, before we meet again, we'll have had a primary, and many of you, a lot of you might have different voting location than you are traditionally used to attending. You should have all received a little postcard in the mail. Please check on that before March the 5th, and that is also during spring break. So if you're going to be out, please fill out an absentee ballot. There is a significant local election. You might have seen the yard signs or the signs around our community for a judge spot, but it is our primary, and it is your right and your ability to go vote, and I encourage everybody to certainly do that. But try to find your note card that was sent to you from the county. If you do not have that and you are looking for some information on where you need to vote, Megan, I'm sure Mr. Dorton knows exactly where they need to go to find out.
Well, really, the Alabama Secretary of State website is the best place to go for that.
Alabama Secretary of State's website. So if you don't have your postcard and you're not sure where you're going to vote, please check on that. We've got a new city building that we'll be utilizing on Wire Road, and there are four different churches in our community that'll be hosting a polling area. So that is all from me. Anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to say tonight? Any announcements? Anyone?
Please, Chief. Sad in this week to learn of the passing of Councilman Dick Phelan. I first was elected to the council, I served with Mr. Phelan, and he was a constant gentleman, and I admired the way he carried himself. He was a true Auburn man, by the examples, even the way he lived his life, and I just can't say enough about how much he'll be missed. We're losing far too many men and women of that generation, and there's something special to this country. He helped make this country what it is, and he helped make Auburn a better place. So I'm thankful to have served with him, and I'm a better person for having known Councilman Dick Phelan.
Thank you for saying that, Tommy, and I certainly should have mentioned something as well. Dick Phelan went to the Naval Academy. He was a naval fighter pilot. He came to Auburn originally to be a part of the ROTC program, the Naval ROTC program, and would end up with that move as a great citizen who served 16 years on this city council and served his community in a number of other ways through Rotary, has been a big part of our Veterans Committee for all these years, and he and Edna have been great corporate citizens of our community, and they've done a lot for a lot of people and a lot of organizations, and Dick is a very, very special man, and we'll certainly miss him. Thank you, Chief, for helping remind me that. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
The Auburn Dance Marathon ended Saturday. Participants stayed on their feet for over 10 hours, dancing to raise over $350,000 for the Children's Miracle Network. It's a really great program they've got going there, raising money for hospitals across the country. Really proud of our students participating in that. The Auburn University Student Lobby Board will be attending Higher Education Day at the Capitol in Montgomery this Thursday. Higher education institutions across the state are meeting up to participate in this event. It'll include a brief parade around the Capitol, followed by a speech by the governor, as well as a chance to meet with their assigned legislators as they advocate for expansions to the Higher Education Trust Fund, which is something that we find very important. This month is Black History Month, and as the Black Student Union is celebrating their 40th anniversary, they hosted a formal dinner with a couple really great guest speakers, as well as this year's Unity Week, which featured activities such as a networking hour, allowing members of the Black Student Union to speak and meet with other officials and people to help progress their careers going forward. It had art exhibitions, a field day, painting activities, as well as a social hour with the International Student Organization. From what I hear, it went really well. The fall application cycle for the 2024 admissions class is underway, and in the first batch of admitted students through the early action process, the average ACT score was a 29. The average GPA was a 4.2, which is really impressive statistics. Overall, there were over 55,000 applications this year, which sets a new university record and is an increase in 14% from last fall. And finally, there is a new Obby statue coming in front of the Melton Sueded Center that is going to be unveiled this Saturday, which is something we're all looking forward to. But that's all for me this week. War Eagle.
War Eagle. Okay. This time is an opportunity for citizens to communicate to the City Council about anything on the agenda. We'd ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. There are a number of items on our agenda tonight, particularly under ordinances and resolutions that do have public hearings attached, and if you'd like to speak about one of those, I'd ask that you wait until that time to speak to the City Council. But if you'd like to address us about anything else that's on the agenda, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with City Manager's Communications.
All right. Under City Manager's Communications this evening, we have the announcement of quite a few board vacancies. A lot of this is caused by us bumping our first March meeting later one week, so just bear with me for a minute. We have one vacancy on the Auburn Waterworks Board for a term that begins April 6th and ends April 5th, 2030. The appointment will be made at the March 19th City Council meeting. One vacancy on the Downtown Design Review Committee for a term that begins April 18th and ends April 17th, 2030. The appointment will be made at the April 2nd City Council meeting. Two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission for terms that begin April 21st and end April 20th, 2027. The appointments will be made at the April 2nd City Council meeting. One vacancy on the Auburn Public Library Board for a term that begins April 15th and ends April 14th, 2028. The appointment will be made at the April 2nd City Council meeting. One vacancy on the Cemetery Advisory Board for a term that begins April 15th and ends April 14th, 2028. The appointment will be made at the April 2nd City Council meeting. And last but not least, one vacancy on the Board of Education for a term that begins June 1st and ends May 31st, 2030. The appointment will be made at the April 16th City Council meeting. All of the above vacancies will be posted tomorrow, and the portal will open.
Okay. Thank you. Move forward with the consent agenda.
All right. Our first item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to remove items 8C, that's 8 Charlie, and 8 Echo, E.
C, 8E. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We'll start with 8C.
Item 8C authorizes revisions and updates the Engineering Design and Construction Manual. This item was postponed from the February 6th meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold.
Thank you. I mentioned this to the City Manager earlier. The change on page 1-36, which replaces the flow chart, is missing a couple of steps, and the steps are called out on page 1-30. There are no change to the text, no problem with the text, but I would ask that the flow chart be revised to account for the three possible actions that are detailed on page 130, those being conditional approval, continuance, or denial. So that's, again, I have no intention to withhold a vote on this, but I would ask that the staff take a look at that prior to final publication.
Ms. Crouch, are we still okay to go ahead and move forward tonight with his?
Absolutely, we are. The steps are outlined there. This addresses what one does, but it doesn't specifically call out those three items. Something we're happy to look at.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We've got a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 8D accepts maintenance of approximately 4.92 miles of streets previously maintained by Lee County.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Mr. Griswold again.
Thank you. I just have one question. Are we going to be responsible for bringing these up to city standards, or is the county responsible for doing that prior to us accepting responsibility for them?
It's a hybrid of things through the NPO funds, but I'll have City Engineer Fraser speak to that.
So typically, we just accept them as is unless there's a special condition we need to work out with the county. Several years ago, we actually acquired several streets and received money from the county, but in this case, we would just receive the streets as they are. We are working with the county on the section of Beehive Road, but the other streets, we'll just take as is.
So why would we take on the responsibility for these if we have to put money into them before they're up to standard?
So the process is that based on the annexations that occur over the years, typically we do it annually, but we haven't done it in a few years. As the city annexes property on both sides of each street, the city then begins to assume responsibility for those sections. So it's really a function of more so annexation than anything.
And in this case, the city has, Ms. Crouch, virtually all the property on either side of the street here?
We do, and some of this is even involved in annexations and other things you have tonight. It's kind of a true up over time, but this is a process we've followed for years. There have been times, something's in really bad shape, we don't, but also to the point of the county when the city's fully encompassed both sides of a section of road, that's kind of their ability to maintain when it's really in the city limits. They ask us to do this. Not all county roads that we've accepted over the years are ever up to city standards unless we do a full-depth reclamation, which you're about to see on Beehive Road. We're going to have to weigh dig-ups, but the section of it that is the worst in some senses is not the section that we're going to be owning, which is from West Tech Lane back toward the interstate and Old Cox Road. That is in rough shape too, which we're working with them on, but that's not our road. And so therefore, we're taking a section that is wholly in the city limits, and that's something also based on all that's going on out there needs to be fixed, and it will be.
And for Mrs. James Road, a large portion of that will be redeveloped by the development that is going off of Mrs. James Road?
Yes, Old Sanford Development. And the county and I work to try to determine a logical terminus so that Mr. Ballard knows where those endpoints are versus, say, mid-block. So on Miss James Road, you see, it does go to Quell Chase, and there's a portion that is just outside of the city, but the majority of that section is within the city limits.
And we still have a lot of citizens that live, especially on the far reaches of the city, off of county roads and that the county maintains, so.
Mr. Griswold, you complete?
Yeah, nothing more to say.
Okay. Anyone else have a question or comment?
I'm very pleased to see the Beehive Road changed, but we really need, we need to work with the county or somebody, or take it ourselves. Beehive Road really needs some improvements, particularly all the building going on in Industrial Park out there. The road all the way from Cox Road, what is now Cox Road to Wire Road, really needs major improvements for all the traffic that's on it now.
And we're working with the county on it, but right now, what's mainly slated is West Tech Lane to Biltmore Lane, the section that we're, yeah.
Just something we need to keep in mind for the future.
Absolutely. We'll work at the staff level, and you guys can work at the political level with county commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Item 9A1 is a request from the Industrial Development Board of the City of Auburn to annex approximately 160 acres of property located at 94 or 94 Lee Road 9, also known as Biltmore Lane. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Hearing none, are there any comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none. Lindsey with the roll call.
Foreman.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9A2 is a request from the City of Auburn to annex approximately 2.07 acres of property that houses the City of Auburn List Station, located east of Biltmore Lane and north of Interstate 85. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its February 8th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none of the questions or comments from the council. Okay. Lindsey with the roll call.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9A3 is a request from Catherine Barrett to annex approximately 2.9 acres of property located at 2220 Estate Drive. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its February 8th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Hearing none of the comments or questions. Okay. Lindsey.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Coblenz.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B1 is a request from Matt Cobb on behalf of Fountain Gate Church to rezon approximately 11.27 acres from Merle to Limited Development District for property located at 1415 Morse Mill Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, we ask that you please come forward and share your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Can we, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, can we get an overview of the purpose of the request for rezoning, since this has been a longstanding use on this site?
Sure. I'll have our plan director, Mr. Wahid Cotton, handle that, please.
Yeah.
Matt, you can't, sorry, the applicant is raising his hand, but I just want to remind you can't speak unless council asks, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the reason that they requested the rezoning is that in rule, the floor area ratio is a lot more restrictive than it is in LDD, and essentially, they're already buttoned up against what that limit would be in rule. And so they requested rezoned LDD. That way, it would accommodate their current expansion that they're attempting and any future expansions that they want to do to accommodate their new sanctuary as for the church. And so like I said, the current restrictions in rule are far too restrictive for their planned expansions, and LDD would allow them to pursue their future expansions for the church. And we confirm that their intentions are for to remain a church, and it's just going to be expansion of the sanctuary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
The adjacent property owner had some issues or concerns about the water runoff with the new facility. We will be reviewing the water runoff plans and sure, we're not creating further issues on adjacent property owners with runoff from this property.
Yes, upon submission of their engineering plans, we will.
All right. I just, I wanted to say this to you. I think this highlights a need for us to kind of revisit our zoning ordinances and rewrite our zoning ordinances. Here we are kind of putting an institutional use into what I consider probably more of a primary residential type zoning to make it fit, and I understand the staff's recommendation and why we did that because this gave us the lowest density possible if something were to happen here. But I certainly hope as we continue to rework or hopefully rework our zoning ordinances, with the, an institutional use will be considered, and hopefully down the road, an institutional rezoning will occur for this property. I would like to see that happen down the road, this property be considered for rezoning to more of an institutional use. We have this one, we had Grace Church a few weeks ago. I think those are two examples that just kind of highlight our need to revamp our zoning ordinances altogether, and I think this, you know, is just something we need to really work on and focus on. So just want to put that out there on public record.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've stated that the main reason for rezoning this is because of the floor area ratio. Is, are there any options for waiving that, or can the Board of Zoning Adjustment do something that would prevent us from having to go through this action and still allow the church to expand?
So for the Board of Zoning Adjustment to do that, there has to be a hardship created on the land by the ordinance. In this case, while it's up to the Board of Zoning Adjustment from the longest tenured planner at the city, which is me, that does not meet the test. That means the zone allows them to do many things. It just doesn't allow them to expand the sanctuary to the level in which they want to. So the only other choice is to rezon it. And so to Councilman Coblenz's point, the way our zoning ordinance is written is a lot of zones, many uses can coexist together, and what neighbors don't know is with a lot of our zone, it could be 100 different types of uses, from different housing types, to different commercial things, to offices going next door. And if I understood him correctly, he's saying he'd like to see something a little more prescriptive at times where citizens know this is the list of things that can go here and otherwise, pretty much, except for rare circumstances, it can't. Churches are unique because they're one of the few things that's allowed in a lot of our zones conditionally because a lot of older churches are in residential areas. But to that end, the only other way to do this is the new planned unit development regulations that we're looking at, which may not allow a church. I haven't even gotten to that point, but for other developments, some of that comes in negotiations or things like this, where you're doing a specific plan for a specific piece of property.
Yep. That's correct.
And so right now, it's not well, you can only put six or eight things there, I'm not sure that's, that's our goal either. I think the concern right now is LDD allows residential unfettered and permitted by right, and when it says institutional, you're not expecting residential there, which I fully understand, it's something we're happy to look at, and we can certainly brainstorm, and I don't know, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, just that, I mean, we've already identified some inconsistencies with the future land use plan and what things are listed as institutional, it's something that we need to address internally, and then also, I mean, creating the institutional zoning district has been something that is on the radar for us later this year.
So we'll be getting there, and also, there's that acknowledgement as we go through and adopt the next future land use plan with a comp plan update, that we have to move expeditiously on the zoning side to catch up, because this is where we get caught, if we don't change a bunch of things relative to the future land use plan, then you have these very questions. And we very much want you to be at the table and weigh in and get these things done as quickly as possible simultaneously. So the zoning matches the future land use plan, that would be the ultimate goal, then it works like it should.
But there's been no indication that the church wants, has any desire in the, now or in the future?
And the applicant, Mr. Cobb, is here, and he can speak to that.
Please, Mr. Cobb. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
We do need you to give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Matt Cobb, 1492 Montrose Road, I'm the engineer applicant of record. Right now, the church is having their services in a gym, and right now, they're looking to build a sanctuary on the current, everybody knows where it is, right? The current football field is sitting there. So they're building a sanctuary on the football field, so they can house their services. And that's just the gist of it. So nothing more, nothing less, they're not looking to develop it anymore for residential or everything the LDD provides, they're just trying to get it somewhere where they can get out of their basketball gym, into a sanctuary. So that's what we're looking at right now, so.
Mr. Cobb, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked Grace Church when their applicant was before us. At such time that an institutional use zone is created, could we come to you and ask you if you'd be willing to rezone at that time, so that you're more fitting to the actual use that we may in time create?
Say that one more time.
So would you be willing to, if at such time?
You see, our zoning ordinance is complicated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we create an institutional use zone that we're talking about and speaking about, at that time, would, would your applicant be willing to rezone to that, so that it's more fitting to that zone, and it would remove our doubt of anything else happening at that time with that property?
I mean, I can't speak for the client, but if it happens within the construction time and the design time, the DRT process, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, and I've actually talked to the landowners around about what we're doing, and I think there was a question about, you know, detention, those sort of things, we've had those discussions, and I've talked personally with them. I mean, this may not be the right place, but ponds and detention and those sort of things, right now where there's actual runoff, we've already discussed those things with the current landowners that are adjacent to it.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we're all on board, and all they're wanting to do is this, they're not trying to build townhomes or strips and or commercial properties or anything like that, they're just trying to get a place where they can get out of their gym into a sanctuary.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, the, you know, we're always careful from a legal standpoint, but the council does have the right, when we're doing universal and city-initiated rezonings, to rezone, especially when you're doing so to the future land use plan, it's been in place for some time. So you do have the ability to do your own map amendments, within reason, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So it's safe to say that if we don't just, don't approve this, they can't build a sanctuary, is that bottom line?
From a floor area ratio standpoint, it will not.
Yep, that is correct, they can't expand anymore.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Lindsey with the roll call?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor? Yes.
Yes.
Item 10A1 is a request from the Industrial Development Board of the City of Auburn to rezone approximately 160 acres from rural to industrial for property located at 94 Lee Road 9, also known as Biltmore Lane. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion, a second, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for the council? From the council, okay. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Item 10A1 is a request from the Housing Authority of the City of Auburn to rezone approximately 160 acres from rural to industrial for property located at 94 Lee Road 9, also known as Biltmore Lane. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion, a second, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for the council?
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion, a second, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for the council? From the council, okay. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Item 10A1 is a request from the Housing Authority of the City of Auburn to rezone approximately 160 acres from rural to industrial for property located at 94 Lee Road 9, also known as Biltmore Lane. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 11th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion, a second, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions for the council? From the council, okay. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes.
Item 10A1 is a request from the Housing Authority of the City of Auburn for conditional use approval of an institutional use to redevelop 56 apartments for property located at 945 North Donahue Drive. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its February 8th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, this time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Brett Bascom with the Forsight Group, just here on behalf of the applicant, let's know, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
This just for clarity, I just, on this, this conditional use, this is nothing new, correct? This is something that's, over the years, this is the use they, they always have had, so this is nothing new, I just want to clarify that.
That's correct.
Correct, yep.
I was gonna make a similar comment to that, this has been a going concern since 1971, and what we're voting on tonight is conditional use for the same use. So it's a little confusing, but no changes, and at least that's the way I see it. You can correct me if you need to, but with a long-serving, this kind of reminds you of the church argument again, where you've got zoning requirements that have changed around the issue, and we're just trying to clean that up with the zoning request tonight, but we're doing that by way of conditional use approval.
Correct, you would be in the same boat, and we don't want this to happen, and it did not happen, and I don't want it taken that way, but if some natural disaster destroyed half the units and hurt no people, they would still have to come back to you to rebuild, because it's the nature of this redevelopment district, zoning districts, which permeates throughout this whole area, but that is fully accurate, nothing is changing here, you're taking out 56 units, and you're putting back 56 new units. The main difference is that what appears to be the red brick style public housing that is repeated from coast to coast and north to southeast to west goes away in this first phase, and will continue to go away, and these will look like market rate apartments that we see populated throughout the city, and will be a much better environment, but, you know, noted about your concerns relative to having to do a conditional use, but it's the nature of the zoning district, and has been this way since 1984, something else we can look at, but isn't uncommon.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A1 authorizes a tax abatement for LeWah America Incorporated for the purchase of new manufacturing machinery to be located at 229 Enterprise Drive in Auburn Technology Park South. The company anticipates hiring 24 new employees over the next two years and investing approximately $5.37 million.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C1 authorizes a contract with Batson Cook Company for the Auburn Public Library ADA restroom renovations project in the amount of $597,756.
Move for approval.
I have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council? Yes, sir.
I have a kind of a summary here, we've looked at this in theory, but now we're looking at it in detail, and these appear to be family-friendly constructed bathrooms, so I just want to point that out, that we've looked at it from that viewpoint. The only thing I think anybody's got a concern about is that the joint or communal or whatever the right word, multi-gender washroom, but that doesn't appear to be an issue either with the doors open to the, to the public there, and they're easily accessible at any time, in fact, I don't even know if there are any doors, I don't believe there are on the washroom area.
There are not.
Doors, doors.
So it's kind of wide open there, so I don't see any cause for concern, no cause for alarm on this, from a family-friendly point of view here.
And that really is the point, is to make it as safe as possible for?
So we're adding two family, yeah.
A parent and a child, or whatnot, whatever kind of scenario.
There's two family restrooms that are just, open the door and go in, and then this one is in the children's area and has five, I call them toilet rooms, floor to ceiling, completely enclosed doors, and then a common sink area. That allows a parent with a child of any gender to be in the bathroom area with their children, and they can be in the bathroom room or stall with them, or not, but they can stand in the sink area all they want, you can see clearly in there, yes, there's plenty of privacy, but it's very open, and this is a concept that addresses where parents can be in there with their children, no problem.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C2 authorizes a contract with ProLogic ITS LLC for the purchase and installation of police vehicle equipment for 23 vehicles in the amount of $263,342.53.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council?
Item 10C3 authorizes the use of various funding sources totaling $1.8 million to assist the Auburn Housing Authority with Ridgecrest Apartments Redevelopment Phase One, which will redevelop 56 units with a total investment of $20.23 million.
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C2 authorizes a contract with Batson Cook Company for the Auburn Public Library ADA restroom renovations project in the amount of $597,756.
Move for approval.
I have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council? Yes, sir.
I have a kind of a summary here, we've looked at this in theory, but now we're looking at it in detail, and these appear to be family-friendly constructed bathrooms, so I just want to point that out, that we've looked at it from that viewpoint. The only thing I think anybody's got a concern about is that the joint or communal or whatever the right word, multi-gender washroom, but that doesn't appear to be an issue either with the doors open to the, to the public there, and they're easily accessible at any But that doesn't appear to be an issue either with the doors open to the, to the public there, and they're easily accessible at any time. In fact, I don't even know if there are any doors. I don't believe there are on the washroom area.
There are not.
So it's kind of wide open there. So I don't see any cause for concern, no cause for alarm on this from a family-friendly point of view here.
And that really is the point, is to make it as safe as possible for.
So we're adding two family, yeah.
Child or whatnot, whatever kind of scenario.
There's two family restrooms that are just open the door and go in. And then this one is in the children's area and has five, I call them toilet rooms, floor-to-ceiling, completely enclosed doors, and then a common sink area. That allows a parent with a child of any gender to be in the bathroom area with their children. And they can be in the bathroom room or stall with them or not. But they can stand in the sink area all they want. You can see clearly in there. Yes, there's plenty of privacy, but it's very open, and this is a concept that addresses where parents can be in there with their children, no problem.
Any questions, comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item ten C two authorizes a contract with Pro Logic ITS LLC for the purchase and installation of police vehicle equipment for twenty-three vehicles in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
May I for approval, second? Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And item ten C three authorizes the use of various funding sources totaling one point eight million dollars to assist the Auburn Housing Authority with Ridgecrest Apartments Redevelopment Phase One, which will redevelop fifty-six units with a total investment of twenty point two-three million dollars.
May I for approval, second?
Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
I just would like to say, I think this is a great step forward in, in really bringing this area up to current standards. And it also provides a lot more of an aesthetic that is comparable to modern housing. And I just think it's a good step forward, and I appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
I agree with Ms. Whitten on that. I think it's a great idea. And I think it'll help in fighting crime in the area. It'll look much better. And I'm just very, I'm very happy to see the City of Auburn take this step.
And I, and I just want to say, I would like to thank Ms. Sharon Talbert for her vision to upgrade the appearance of the Housing Authority and your strong dedication and efforts to make a difference in the community. Ms. Sharon and her staff have put together a great design that will enhance, enhance the quality of life for all the residents living in the Housing Authority. Better and affordable housing will provide residents in a safer and secure environment that can, that they can feel proud to call home. Ms. Sharon, continue to push your platform to the highest level, and I'm sure it will prevail. Thanks again for all you do for your tenants and the constituents of Ward one, four, and five, and the community. Keep striving.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Excellent. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I'd like to second that. Very, very well said. This is going to be startlingly different. It's going to be quite different as to the standard that we're used to seeing. And I think if we're not leading the front here, we're very close to it. There may be one, I think you mentioned, in La Grange.
There's something similar you can see in La Grange easily, yes.
But we're going to be very proud of this change. It's going to be dramatic. And our portion of this in the finance areas, not very much frankly, but it's very creative. I think we, this is about our last three hundred thousand in the COVID funds, so we're just finishing that off. And the block grant, and in addition to that, there's a shared loan. So we're only paying half of that back, so.
And some general fund money.
Oh, that's right, sorry. For the delta. But very well done. It's going to be something that we'll all stand back and say, wow, we're proud of that.
Everybody else good? Yes, sir.
And those of you that are just looking at the agenda item, when you see this twenty million dollar expenditure, it looks like real, real sticker shock, and it's a huge number. But the city is not, not carrying that entire load. And Ms. Talbert has done a fine job of reaching out and finding other, other people's money to take care of this project. And if for some reason the other people's money falls through, then the city is not obligated to follow through either. Because it takes a certain amount of money to do this. If we can't get it all, then we can't do it. So again, Sharon has done a fantastic job. And I don't want anybody to just walk out of here thinking, oh, my God, the city just spent twenty million dollars for fifty-six units. That's not, not the case.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Ms. Talbert, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your board's leadership. Thank you for your continued vision for improving the lives of those that you work with every day. We're grateful. We're also appreciative of your service on the Auburn City School Board and your spare time, and thank you for what you do there. I want to thank the staff. There was a number of staff members that came together to figure this out when the need was communicated to the city, that our participation was vital. And Megan, I'm grateful for all those people that worked for you, that came together and creatively thought of a way for us to be the final piece of this. This is, this is great for fifty-six families and fifty-six clients of Ms. Talbert and the Auburn Housing Authority, but it's also a great day for Auburn. All of us should care deeply about those who need housing the most. And this is who this is serving, and it's a proud day for our community. There are thousands of cars that go up and down Donahue Drive every day, and this is going to be a bright shining star on Donahue Drive for us to ride by. But there's going to be some happy children and some happy parents that live in these facilities that are going to be so proud of where they get to live now and where they're going to be raising their families and doing life. And it's very encouraging to know the changes that that could make in itself for those families and those young people as they grow up and live here in Auburn. So this is, this is really important. It's really important, and I appreciate all the hard work for all the people. The council has worked hard on this. The staff has worked hard on this. The Housing Authority's worked hard on this. And, and we wish all the best as we move forward. Yes, Ms. Talbert, would you like to come say something? I will, I think the council will be okay if you'd like to come say something to us, please. Yes, ma'am.
Well, excuse my tennis shoes. I'm recovering from my ankle sprain, so. I, I will, I'm going to try to say this without getting emotional. Because you all feel that your investment is small considering the total amount of investment. But without the city council and the City of Auburn's support, this will not happen. It's not just about the dollars. It's about the dollar that you're contributing that helps to a very competitive application process. So those dollars equate to points. We are grinding to get this application submitted tomorrow, so I cannot thank you enough. I'm not one for calling names, because I overlook someone, but Megan McGowan, Philip Dunlap, you all have been here for me, mayor, since I came from the city to the Housing Authority. So I can't thank you all enough that my intent to house family with dignity, for people, not to see projects, but people. So this is personal for me. I grew up in this neighborhood, although I'm no longer there. It's just my small part of trying to give back. So thank you all so much for helping us to provide families to live with decency and respect and help us to remove the stigma that's associated with people that's just trying to do life. So thank you all for all that you do, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much.
Can I just say one other thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to also let people know that it's fifty-six units. This is just the beginning. This is just the first phase of it. And so Sharon is working hard on actually doing more phases to all the Housing Authorities in the future. So that's a great thing. And when we talk about Ridgecrest, and it came up in nineteen seventy-one, I want everybody to know that my family was the fourth family in Ridgecrest in nineteen seventy-one. So I am so grateful, and it's been long overdue.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you for sharing that. All right, anyone else? All right, we've got a motion in a second. I think I know how this is going to go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Talbert. You're welcome.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address the city council about anything, we ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to talk to the city council. Please make all your comments addressed to the city council.
My name is Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one, Dedson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. I have a speech here. I'm not going to give it. I'm, I'm so proud of the council and the mayor concerning the affordable housing. I'm so glad. I've always wondered why houses had to all look alike. Why in the world was that ever done? I don't know if the, when the Johnson administration began those things, I'm not sure. But I'm proud of each one of you. I say a lot of things to each one of you. I do have a speech here that would, would not be as pleasing, but y'all deserve good credit when it's there. And I hope that many of you make sure that there are a lot more of these developments. The idea of going through and seeing that. I live three blocks away from housing there on Old Mill Road, I believe it is. And I would love to see that place also done that way. And I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed, even with you, Megan. I don't mean that to be ugly. I just, I complain about many things with you, Megan, and the mayor. And sometimes there's, there's a good time, there's a bad time, and I think this is just a joyous time. The last thing I'd ever want to do is, is to deflate such a momentous time, I guess you'd say. Is that a good, what do you call it, bureaucratic way of saying it, momentous? So I don't mean that to be ugly. I just mean, I guess I did, so sorry about that. And anyway, y'all take care and keep doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
I'm James Dewberry, twelve fifty-nine Penny Lane, Auburn, Alabama. I'm here with Priscilla Wyatt and Kate Whitten, representing the Auburn Blue FFA chapter. As you may know, FFA is a national student organization committed to furthering agricultural education and opening up opportunities for leadership and career development for any and all students who want to pursue agriculture. This week is National FFA Week, and to kick it off, we're starting a seed drive. The seed drive is for a kind of seed library at the public library where people can come and take seeds for their gardens and then turn any extra seeds they have. Right now, we're accepting any donations. Students can donate in Mr. Stevens or Ms. Falk's room at Auburn High School. And parents can come to the front office, and we have a little box right when you walk in where you can submit any seeds for this drive. We'd like to thank the City of Auburn and Auburn Public Library, because without you, this would not be possible. And we're excited to see all the gardeners across Auburn be connected and students and young people be able to pursue any opportunities in agriculture. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
James, quick question. If you're in the community and you want to donate seeds and you're not connected to Auburn High, where should they take those seeds?
I'm confident you can walk into the front office at Auburn High School. If not, you can wait until the library actually opens, and then there'll be opportunities there.
Okay, so they could drop them off at the public library until the seed library is completed?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Good job. Who'll be next? Yes, ma'am.
Martha Shamp, three oh seven Camellia Drive. I would like to speak about AIDS, a public health crisis. The cost of HIV treatment and the medication is antiretroviral therapy with frequent visits to your doctor. Costs run anywhere between eighteen hundred dollars to forty-five hundred dollars each month for the rest of your life. Sometimes HIV can become resistant to more common drugs. Then your doctor will need to prescribe something stronger but more costly. The drug Trogarzo, which you can take as a shot, not a pill, that is nine thousand dollars a month for the rest of your life. This is a medical article reviewed by Dr. Barry Zingman, September twenty twenty-two. Stage one, acute HIV infection. Symptoms are swollen lymph nodes, headaches, sore throat, fever, rash, muscle and joint aches, upset stomach sores, and the mouth. Stage two, chronic HIV infection. This stage lasts approximately ten to fifteen years in most people who don't take HIV treatment. The symptoms are fatigue, loose stools or diarrhea, weight loss, or Sjengel's infection, or bouncer pneumonia, and other horrible things I can't tell you. HIV continues then to replicate in the body, and it is possible to infect others so that they can pay eighteen hundred dollars to four thousand five hundred a month for the rest of their life to shore up in a hopeless effort their help. Stage three is full-blown AIDS. It ends in the chronic stage. HIV levels rise dramatically, and the virus destroys the white blood cells. Certain infections or types of cancer develop. The body is unprotected against every sort of infection. Pneumocystic pneumonia causes chest pain, trouble breathing, and fatigue. Cyto-megalovirus can affect their eyes, causing blindness, or attack their lungs, heart, intestines, or brain. Gays, lesbians, and bisexuals have three to four times as many partners as heterosexuals, thus compounding their risk. And this is the lifestyle that the library is encouraging.
Who'll be next?
Carrie Hill, eleven ninety-nine North Star Court. I wanted to check out a copy of My Shadow is Purple so that I could read some of it tonight. But it's so popular at our library that I'm on a waitlist, so I decided that a book review would have to do. Ifoma Ende Jeff writes, "My Shadow is Purple by Scott Stewart tells a powerful story of being who you are and inclusivity. In a deviation from traditional gender norms of associating blue with masculinity and pink with femininity, the child's shadow is purple, symbolizing gender fluidity. The child participates in activities for both genders without feeling the need to conform to societal expectations. They are a ballerina and play football. The child loves glitter and trains. In a particular situation, the child is faced with a difficult decision. They're asked to go against their truth despite their unique circumstance of embracing all identities. This is a challenging situation, but the child remains true to themselves, and then the room becomes more inclusive and welcoming to everyone. Instead, the room is changed to accommodate them. And it is a group effort with everyone playing a role in bringing about acceptance and understanding of others. Had the children or the teacher not been open to diversity and inclusivity, the room would have remained the same as it had always been." End quote. Next Benedict was born on January eleventh, two thousand eight. They grew up in Owasso, Oklahoma, where they were a sophomore at Owasso High School. Next identified as non-binary and used they/them pronouns. Next loved nature. They enjoyed all cats, but they especially loved their cat Zeus. They drew, they read, they cooked, they played Minecraft. And last week, they died after being beaten to death by their classmates in the school bathroom. When people are given a public platform to call others perverse and depraved, it matters. When people yell about others being filthy and immoral because of an aspect of who they understand themselves to be, it matters. And when leaders say nothing in response, or when they agree that anti-trans, anti-lesbian, anti-gay, anti-bi, or any anti-queer rhetoric has any place in civic forums, it matters. On February seventh, Next Benedict was dropped off at high school. On February fifteenth, they were placed in their grave. If we want to protect children in our community, we need more books like My Shadow is Purple, not fewer. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Jeff Walker, twenty seventy-eight Autumn Ridgeway. Over the last year, several of us have had to stand by and listen as employees of the library and members of this community have been needlessly called out and attacked. To all of you in this room or listening at home that have felt this, I'm sorry you've had to go through this, and I want to let you know that you continue to have support in this community. Some of you on this council may have heard these arguments. You may agree with them. You may be just tired of it and want it to go away. I want to caution you on thinking in that direction as making this go away removes freedom of choice from all parents in this community. The antagonists would have you believe that they and certain special interest groups know what best type of content should be available in literature for checking out in our library, that these groups know better or are more responsible than the parents who visit our incredible library. The antagonists would have you believe that their opinion on this matter is righteous, and all this content should be banned. Continuing this line of thought, any such ban removes the choice of individuals in this community as to what type of literature they would like to consume or what type of literature a parent might deem appropriate for their children. Our state believes so much in the parent's right to choose things for their kids that in the last legislative session, they proposed a law known as HB six, which passed and was signed by the governor to prevent just this type of disruption for parents. We have the privilege to live in a diverse community here in Auburn, filled with different cultures, beliefs, and social standards. We need to continue to support and grow that diversity by understanding that the needs of few antagonist or special interest groups do not always represent the whole and good for our community. We need to celebrate our differences, even those we don't necessarily agree with. I, for one, would not like to have my freedom of choice, what is made available to my kids, removed or revoked by special, special interest or an antagonist who has called members of my family and myself horrible things from this podium. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Hi, council. My name is Leah Billy Welborn the fifth, one twelve North DeBart eleven, apartment five. Don't have any prepared remarks, but came in time to hear some of the earlier sharing and wanted to, you know, come and share my thoughts with y'all. I recently brushed up on something called the Pyramid of Violence. And the concept of it is that low-level violence, such as violent, or sorry, not violent, but discriminatory, hateful, bigoted, et cetera, feelings and thoughts are what compromise the base of the pyramid. They're the thing that happens most frequently, and they're low harm as things go. Next level up is words. Then there's actions and violent actions up higher. So the concept behind it is that interrupting violence, bigotry, et cetera, at any severity disrupts the whole system. And so I, I'm happy to hear people speaking up for this mic not being used to perpetuate and allow violence and advocating for interrupting that because it keeps people safe at all levels. Had some other thoughts before I got up, but, you know, public speaking anxiety. Give it a couple seconds, see if it comes back. Oh, something I did want to applaud y'all on is I was listening in on YouTube how we've got the housing approval done. That's really special. And I'm, I'm so glad to know that, you know, the city's been doing good work on that front. It made me want to circle back to an inquiry from a few years past about. It made me want to circle back to an inquiry from a few years past about the recent funding under the COVID relief for homelessness and shelters. So hopefully I'll get in touch with one of y'all and ask where that ended up leading. And then one last thing. I want to applaud the whole staff, the council, and library staff especially for not taking opinions as fact. There are claims made about children's safety, which I know is a very sensitive issue. But there's been no evidence that children are harmed by material that represents my community. So I appreciate that you've kept things evidence-based on that front. Thanks.
Who will be next? Okay. We'll close citizens' open forum. Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The individual before us who speaks regularly about books that she doesn't like being part of the Auburn Public Library collection knows well that the Auburn City Council has no purview over library policies. She's aware of the mechanism in place at the Auburn Public Library, not city council, should a citizen wish to question materials selected for inclusion into the library collection. She's also aware of the care taken by library staff to ensure that children, together with their parents, have positive experiences at the library and that they enjoy age-appropriate materials. The Auburn City Council Citizens' Open Forum agenda item affords this individual a platform upon which she regularly attempts to publicly disparage the LGBTQ+ community, a community made up of our friends, of our neighbors, of our colleagues, of our family members, and of our fellow taxpayers. Her words do not reflect the mission or vision of this city's administration. My family and I are avid readers, and we're stalwart fans of our local libraries. My wife is an author, and she's a third-generation librarian. When we encounter a book in our library which doesn't work for us, like most reasonable people here, we simply return it to the shelf for an interested reader to discover, and we move on. It's also important to note that the children's section of the library is currently as busy as it has ever been with parents and children enjoying the collection with zero complaints, with zero complaints. I'm proud of our Auburn librarians and the employees of the Auburn Public Library and of librarians nationwide. Their public service is rooted in empathy, diversity, openness, and especially community. For many in our city, the public library is an essential service, providing access to information and resources, access to computer connectivity, literacy support, lifelong learning, and it serves as a gathering place for a wide variety of groups. I believe our librarians curate the library collection studiously and responsibly, and I trust the decisions and choices they make. And as such, many of us in the community get to see our lived experience reflected in the richly diverse titles available, including the LGBT+ community. And for that, I'm deeply grateful. They even have books on kangaroos. I encourage every citizen to go to the Auburn Public Library and to see for themselves what an outstanding, inclusive city service looks like. Thank you.
Anyone else? Does there move to adjourn?
Submit.
We adjourn.